Welcome, everybody, to the August 2 special meeting of the Board of Trustees at Long Beach Community College District. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda, we have also trustee Intuk joining us by phone from Karnataka, Republic of India. So, Uduwak, can you hear us, trustee Intuk?
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, first order is the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Malauulu, can you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance? Everyone, stand, please.
Everyone, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can you please call the role?
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Uduwak Joe Intuk.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
And Zia.
Here. Okay, item 1.4, public comments on agenda items. I don't think we have any public comments. Okay, we're going to move on to 1.5. Item 1.5, Budget Plan 2018-2019: Plans for Operating Deficit Reduction. Superintendent President Reagan Ramali and Vice President of Business Services Marlene Dunn will provide information on the current planning and implementation of budget reductions for LBCC. Superintendent President Ramali, if you could please take this item on, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome trustee Intuk from India. And thank you so much to the IT team who made that possible. Thank you so much. You guys are wonders. We want to start out by looking at the budget plan for 2018-2019. We will be adopting our budget in September. And as you know, approximately a year and a half ago, we were faced with an operating deficit of approximately $10.7 million. We've been very successful in being able to reduce that operating deficit by about 55 percent. And we've been very fortunate to avoid layoffs and programmatic cuts in the process. I'm very grateful, and I know that the staff are very grateful, to the board for making an excellent decision with offering the SERP. So now the question remains, with our rising STIRS and PIRS rates that are not within our control, what is that going to do to our budget in the future? What kind of deficit still remains? And what kind of plans have we put in place to reduce it on a permanent basis? And also to bring our pattern of spending approximately 89% to 90% on salaries, what can we do aggressively to start moving that in the correct direction? And so tonight, you're going to see a presentation by CBO Marlene Dunn that's going to talk about everything we've done so far. It's going to be a phased-in approach. And we're going to talk about that phased-in approach tonight. And you're going to be very pleased to see that it is dramatically heading us in the right direction and keeping that 90% figure in a downward trajectory. So I'd like to introduce Marlene Dunn. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Before I talk about the plan we've developed so far, I want to set the stage a little bit and talk about the budget challenges we're facing. We're facing them from a number of avenues. We have historical deficit spending. We have, as Dr. Ramali mentioned, a salaries and benefits ratio that is at an uncomfortably high level. We have enrollment history that has not provided us with additional revenues. And we are also facing challenges from the state budget. So when we look at our past budgets, and beginning in 2016-17, you can see that we had a surplus of only $2.2 million. And I say "only" because that is a very small percentage of our total revenue. And that means that we spent almost all of our revenue on expenditures in 2016-17. So as far back as then, we were having a very tight budget. And in that year, the tentative budget actually did project a deficit. When we look at our 2017-18 budget, as Dr. Ramali mentioned, the tentative budget did project $10.7 million in deficit spending. And as a reminder, deficit spending is when you spend more than you receive in any one year, and we are focusing on general unrestricted funds only. At this point in time, with the tentative budget that you adopted last month, it included a projection of those $2,017-18 dollars as being only $4.8 million of a deficit. So we've reduced the deficit over the course of the 2017-18 year. And that's critical. I like to share that a budget is a living document, that it changes over the courses of fiscal year as our factors and other situations change. And so what we have an opportunity to do is first identify the size of a problem and then work on the solution. That was successful in 2017-18, and it's going to be successful again in 2018-19. So with the tentative budget, the projected deficit is $6.7 million. And for 1920, it's always important to look out more than one year, the projected deficit is $14.9 million. Critical component of our budget is our salaries and benefits. We are in the service industry, and so it is natural for the majority of our expenditures to be on people. That's what we do. Unfortunately, our ratio of salaries and benefits to our total expenditures is at a high level, which makes it very difficult to manage. We've been hovering around the 90% level since 2012-13. The one anomaly in 2013-14 was from the -- is a result of some drastic staffing reductions made in that year. One of the reasons it's difficult to control at this level is that it tells us that only 10% of our budget is in operations. And so our solution to a budget problem mathematically has to involve salaries and benefits. One of the driving forces behind that ratio are PIRS and STIRS increases. As a reminder, at the state level, the STIRS and PIRS fund was projected to be $30 billion upside down in 30 years. Part of the solution from Governor Brown's administration was to solve the problem by increasing all three rates involved in STIRS and PIRS. That is, the employee contribution rate, the state's contribution, and the employer contribution. The primary increase is on the employer contribution side, and that's us. And so you can see that the rates continue to increase over the course of several years. In 1718, they increased a little more than $1.5 million. We project for 1819 about a $2 million increase, and you can see in 1920 slightly more than $2 million. So that definitely impairs our ability to control the payroll and benefits cost, and this is completely out of control. And when we look at our enrollment pattern, again, this is not abnormal. When we look at our region, that most community colleges are having flat or declining enrollment. But it does mean that this is not an opportunity for us to increase our revenues, particularly as we look at a new funding formula that I'll discuss a little bit more in a moment. But this means that we've had relatively flat enrollment over the past several years. And talking about the state's new student-centered funding formula, this is critical because this does determine the majority of our unrestricted funding. Beginning in 1819, we begin a transition to an entirely new funding formula. That in prior years, our apportionment was based solely on enrollment. With this new funding formula, beginning in 1819, we are going to be transitioning to a formula that's based only 60% on enrollment, 20% on low-income enrolled students, and 20% on completion rates. There is a three-year transition period, but it is a brave new world for us. Luckily, we are in a hold-harmless position, meaning we are going to be receiving the same amount of funding as we received in 1718. Now, one of the differences between what we adopted in our tentative budget and what you're going to see in the final budget is that the tentative budget was based on the governor's May revision proposal. Since then, we've had an enacted state budget with significant changes for the better, that we moved from a two-year transition to a three-year transition, meaning we'll be funded at a hold-harmless level for three years. Most importantly, we moved from a one-time COLA in 1819 to an ongoing COLA, meaning we'll receive the benefit of the COLA in 1819 and 1920, and then an increase in COLA in 1920, and again in 2021. At a future board meeting, we'll be presenting to you a very in-depth analysis of the funding formula and its impact on us. But what's most important to know is that for now, the next two years, we are in a hold-harmless level. The impact of the ongoing COLA to our revenue is $6 million in 2019-20. So that was a fantastic success for us in influencing the way the formula was interpreted and enacted at the point of the state enactment.
I'm going to add to that, just congratulations to everyone who lobbied very hard at the state and local level to get that. Not only was it successful for Long Beach, but it was very successful for the 51 other districts sitting in a stabilization mode. We were anticipating getting you the detail on the funding formula tonight. However, we've delayed it to the August 21 meeting because we want to add some complexity in there and run some what-if scenarios for you. We want to run what if we don't up completions? What does that mean? What if we don't restore our enrollment? What does it mean? And run a variety of different scenarios for you so you can see exactly what we do need to do to make up for things if we are unsuccessful in one area or another. So it's going to be a much more in-depth presentation that I think will be very helpful to you in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you. And so having set the stage for where we are currently, I'd like to talk a little bit about the approach we had as we developed the deficit reduction plan. The primary purpose is, of course, to reduce the deficit so that we can have a balanced budget and be fiscally healthy. But it's critical that we preserve those effective programs and services, that focusing just on the bottom line on a budget does not necessarily mean we're operating effectively. And we wanted to make sure that we, as an organization, still had our ability to meet our goals, to be aligned with the district's strategic plan. Because it is so wide-ranging, we also recognized that all areas of the district had to be included in both identification of solutions and participation in the implementation of those solutions. So all areas where all vice presidents worked closely together, they worked with their teams to help identify solutions. We disclosed our actions with all stakeholders and really wanted to make sure that what we were proposing was going to be achievable. And really, we also wanted to focus on the future. How are we going to maximize those future revenues by having a focus of a dedication of resources to support student enrollment and completion? The SERP provided us an incredible opportunity to really reorganize, to recognize that our BPRs are giving us efficiencies in process, to recognize that many of those positions had been in existence for a long time, and we don't do business the same way we did 20 years ago or 30 years ago. And to really take a good look at what we need to achieve and to make sure that we are organized in a way to achieve those goals. We wanted to identify savings through the use of best practices as it relates to areas of travel, supplies purchases, food purchases. We want to review all of our contracts for opportunities for savings. And we really want to leverage our restricted programs and grants to make sure that everything we do is aligned with the district's priorities. As we went through the process, we determined that we can't do everything at once. We needed to have a very thoughtful process that provided an opportunity for assessment, for evaluation of success, and to correct any issues that arise. So we developed the three phases. Phase one, which we'll be focusing on tonight, will be implemented immediately. Phase two will be implemented in a six-month period in January, and phase three, July As we go through implementation of the phases, we will be evaluating each one of those steps based on the processes, whether we have improvement or degradation on student enrollment and completions. And those will be assessed at key points throughout the year depending on the metric that we're using. So when we look at phase one, I'm happy to share that we were able to identify $2.37 million in savings through reorganization. These savings are detailed for you in a spreadsheet that is entitled "Proposed Reorganization, Phase One," and is achieved with absolutely no layoffs or program cuts. Each of the areas listed in the spreadsheet has identified ways they can improve their efficiencies with less salaries. And they've done this through a number of areas. In some cases, they've identified that a position's purpose no longer aligned, and so those ongoing tasks were able to be absorbed by other positions with capacity. In other areas, we've actually identified management, including director positions, that we could eliminate and shift some of those responsibilities to other director level, and increase lower positions to absorb some of those responsibilities as well for a net savings. So not all these are very straightforward. Some were complicated, but all reflect how we currently do business and need to perform business.
Marlene, that's outstanding. I wanted to jump in and say that we, when we worked this through with the AFT Union, the classified union, they were very excited that what we've done is eliminate some vacant management positions, increase the number of membership in the classified ranks, and create a career ladder, up some positions for classified, provide them with higher-level opportunities so there is a true career ladder for classified personnel who want to gain opportunities for management. And when we flushed this out with the union, they were very excited about the career ladder opportunities that this brings.
Also in phase one, we identified savings for best practices, a total of $173,000. We looked at travel, and we identified that we could save across the board 25% in unrestricted-funded travel totaling about $68,000. We looked at our regulations and identified that our regulations really cover travel well. We are just providing some guidelines to some areas. The first is really asking folks to describe how their travel serves the goals of the districts, to provide us with that narrative. Second, to limit out-of-state travel to only those events that are not available within the state. And we are requiring that all out-of-state travel be approved through cabinet so we can have a robust conversation. So that if you have an opportunity, a conference, an event out of state, we're asking you to make sure that a similar opportunity doesn't first be available within the state at a lower cost. There are some opportunities that are only available out of state, some significant conferences, for instance. Or perhaps if you're in a grant-funded program, you're going to have a requirement to attend them. But we really wanted to have a robust conversation and examine those out-of-state travel. And we're also looking at multi-person travel. We're asking folks to determine if perhaps they can do a train-the-trainer model and send just a limited number of folks can bring the information back rather than sending several. Or if you have several people who need to have professional development, perhaps instead of sending them to that opportunity, bring that opportunity here, perhaps at a lower cost that might be more accessible to more folks, to really just examine how we're approaching We also looked at our supplies and discovered that doing something as simple as changing the online supplies that are available to the lowest-cost option and being able to do that through our vendor will give us great savings. I think we can all agree that a cheap post-it note works just as well as an expensive one. This does not remove the flexibility, however. If a unit needs a specific supply, they can still order that just through the rec process. But just simply by asking folks to take a look and lose lower, use lower-cost options, we believe we can really get some efficiencies there. And we really did try to preserve in all these best practices flexibility, to allow people to still do their jobs the way they need to do their jobs, but just with a little bit more thoughtfulness. And then we also looked at the provision of food with our hospitality, or what we call the in-service, that when we are supplying food for events, and we determined we can save about $10,000 by reducing that by 15%. We're asking folks to look at modest refreshments, buffets versus plated meals, to look at how many people we're ordering for. We want to reduce the amount of leftovers. We don't want an overabundance of food. And to look at when are we providing them? It makes sense when you have folks for four-hour professional development because it goes over a meal period to provide a meal. But if you're having a three-hour event, you can certainly schedule that around meal periods and where it's appropriate for people to provide their own meal. So really, again, to take a look at how we're using our funds in ways that don't directly serve our students. Through phase one, through these two actions with reorganization and with the best practices, we identified a total of $2.5 million in deficit reduction in 1819. And the impact on 1920, with both ongoing savings as well as the change in the funding formula, reducing the deficit by $6.3 million. What I'm really excited to share is that the ratio of salaries and benefits drops from above 90 to 87.9%. That will continue to drop as we identify other solutions. The remaining deficit in 1819 is just over $4 million and is now under $9 million for Looking at phase two, implementation for phase two really begins now through January 19. Phase two actions would include those things that we could not implement now. Maybe they're dependent upon implementation of a BPR to create an efficiency. Student Support Services Plan is not included in phase one. It will be included in phase two, but we anticipate quickly implementing portions of that once it's completely developed. And best practices would include that full review of our contracts, that as appropriate, we may be looking at going out for a bid or doing RFPs for some areas for services that still are needed. In some cases, we might identify areas where we can shift work to existing staff. And in other areas, we might discover that we no longer need that contracted services. So we plan to have a full and robust review of all contracted services by December 2018, and then moving forward in the remainder of the year with those actions. Phase three would be implemented July 2019. This would take advantage of natural attrition, continuing opportunities for reorganization, as well as those BPRs whose implementation will take slightly longer. We do have a priority list. We are focusing on student enrollment, so admissions, financial aid first. Those are the first points we want to get through. And then as we move forward and implement other efficiencies, we'll have more opportunities. We also want to begin work looking at position control, which is a system that allows us to track our employee assignments differently and have more control over them. And to start examining that as a possible solution for our district to further control costs. I know this is a lot of information for you, but I think that we've really developed a process that is thoughtful, that allows for correction, and that really aligns with the district's priorities and goals while supporting student enrollment and student success. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you, Marlene. That was a fantastic presentation. I want to commend you and, of course, Superintendent President Dr. Ramali for your efforts in really taking a deep dive in assessing the areas where we can make some enhancements and seeing how we can really propel in savings. So I really appreciate that. With that, I want to open it up to the board to see if anybody has questions, comments.
President Zia.
Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. I have three questions, comments. Were the number of memberships that the college belongs to reviewed, or is that not a significant enough savings?
I don't believe that there is any area that is insignificant.
Okay.
That I think it's by the accumulation of every opportunity to reduce our expenditures that we will achieve true balanced budget. Having said that, we have not yet looked at all the memberships. I know that you have already approved your memberships for this fiscal year. But we are carefully reviewing any additional memberships that come up, and that will be part of the contract review process.
Okay, thank you. Second question. On page 17, who is reviewing the contracts? And I don't mean Susie Jones. I mean, is it someone within the contract office? Is it the different departments? Who is reviewing the contracts?
The effort for the contract review is very similar for the effort for reorganization, that it starts at cabinet and trickles down within each area to get input amongst the staff and the users, and then trickles back up. So the first reviewer of the contracts are actually myself and Dr. Ramali. So we can identify first those heavy outliers and then drill deeper. We want to get the most bang for our buck initially and then delve a little deeper.
The reason I ask this is it seems like just a few years ago, we were spending money on branding, spending money on procedures, and not that those aren't wonderful things, but I just wonder at this time, because of a fiscal situation, that we need to review those kinds of expenditures?
We absolutely will. And with changing enrollment trends and students coming from different locations rather than our traditional LBUSD, our methodology of using our branding and marketing will change, and we may want to up it or decrease it depending on changing enrollment patterns and how effective we've been with our conversion rates in converting applicant to enrollee. We're just pulling some data now on some of the effectiveness of our marketing, and we're going to be looking at the effectiveness of it, whether we need it, whether we need it to some extent, whether we need it more, what those levels are to be able to determine whether cuts can be made, yes.
Okay, thank you. And that leads me into my third and final question. Have we looked at additional marketing to international students who pay, you know, three times the tuition, more than that, to go to school here? At one time, we had a ceiling. Then we opened the ceiling, but I haven't heard a lot about the international student program recently.
Yes, we have looked at it. There is interest on the part of the faculty and staff, and myself and the senior team to look at international students. It's something we want to look into a little bit further because it requires a large startup cost, which is something we do not have right now.
I'm sorry, a large what?
A large startup cost. It's an expensive program to run.
Oh, so, but we already have an international program. So it would be increasing what we already have.
Correct. To expand upon it would be pricey. However, I've had conversations with folks at other institutions where we might be able to partner with them in some way. So there are some interesting options available to us. It will cost money to make money, which I'm absolutely not averse to. I just want to balance that with the budget deficit and kind of project what that would look like. So what we want to do is take a look at, do a deeper dive on that before we decide that we're going to go after that direction.
Okay, thank you.
But there is interest. It's whether it's going to be financially feasible in terms of the startup.
Okay.
Costs, or the additional costs, I should say.
Thank you, trustee Baxter. Great questions and comments. Anyone else on the board would like to ask any questions? Trustee Otto?
Is it possible to quantify at this time the SERP savings in the end, and when would the end be? Give us a date. My reading of the document was that, of course, at the beginning, certainly in the first year when you're paying the SERP money out, it costs you money, but eventually you're saving money. And I just want to have some understanding of how much over what period of time.
That's absolutely definable, and let me come back to you with that number. I don't have it in front of me. But the time period we're looking at is a five-year period because we do pay for the SERP with five annual payments that pays for the annuities to provide the SERP to the participants. And that's a 5-year plan. And it is over that five-year period that we experience the savings because that's when the new hires, if you had a one-to-one rehire, is really lower than the folks who left us. But I will share that that's almost an academic number because as we start this reorganization process, we are not rehiring for every position. And so our savings from the SIRP will actually exceed just the simple substitution of a lower salary with a greater salary. That's a little bit more difficult to define, but I can certainly provide you with those projections if we had had a one-to-one rehire.
So I know it's an imperfect science in that what you're doing is making decisions as you go along based on where it is that you are because you want to reduce the deficits as much as possible. But is there any sense at all of, you know, in five years, where we will be in terms of eliminated positions? Or is that just has to be worked out on a year-to-year basis?
I believe that we have to continue to evolve that, that five years from now, it's difficult to project out that far because it's largely dependent upon our state's economy more than anything else. And I know I shared with you at the budget presentation that we are reaching the record for economic recovery in our state. And so we're all expecting that cliff to happen with an economic downturn, and we're just not sure when that will be. But our commitment is to eliminate our deficit spending and have a balanced budget.
And I noticed that the, that our projections into the future, based on what we're going to have to do, the STIRS and PIRS increases and all that, will put us back over the 90% salary and benefit. Is our goal to, over time, reduce that even further based on what our opportunities are? Or is that pretty, are we pretty much wedded to that?
The ever-increasing cost of STIRS and PIRS puts us, as well as every other K-14 agency in the state, in a very difficult position because the combination of step and column in STIRS and PIRS increases has exceeded the annual COLA. There is a burgeoning effort statewide to lobby against putting the entire solution for the STIRS and PIRS funds on the backs of the educational agencies. But barring success there and some kind of legislative relief, we do have to make gradual reductions in our salaries cost to make up for the unavoidable increase in the retirement costs.
Okay. And just to make a point about how we don't know what it is that's going to happen, we are in a very definitely changing political landscape. The party in power now seems to be focusing on cost, accountability, outcomes, much more than previous administrations have been. And I'm talking not only nationally, but even at a statewide level. At the national level, the for-profits are back. They're in the tent. That means that they provide more competition to us for the same students. And we've not always fared so well in that competition because of their marketing and what it is that they, what they offer. There seems to be more of an emphasis on workforce jobs, continuing CTE education. And that's billed as, we've got to rebuild the middle class, and that's how we're going to do it. So we're going to focus on that. And the, there's been a 20-year decline in state funding for community colleges, although that's not true right now in California. But that seems to be a trend that we're going through. 32 states have adopted performance funding. That includes California now. And what that means is, and one other point, and that's that I think millions of workers are feeling disconnected to their economy, the social and political institutions. And our challenges are to align the things we offer with what it is that they feel that they need, not just the ones that are disenfranchised or disillusioned. But it's, we're doing things a lot differently. Education is proceeding. My wife and I are taking a class up at Cal State Long Beach right now in entrepreneurship. And I can just see that come into community colleges in ways that it hasn't before. And so in a very short time, a lot of things are different. And it's going to be necessary for us to change the way that we do things. And we have opportunities here to do that. I think we're thinking about those things. And it's very, very important that as we look at these numbers, we realize that they're tethered to an implicit plan, but not a spelled-out plan completely about where we are, where it is that we're going. And I think it will be important to recognize and say out loud what it, where it is that we are, where it is that we're going, and why it is that we're going to serve those needs that we've been talking about. And so I'm not looking at this and saying, this defines where we're going to be in five years. It's just where we are right now and what we're thinking about.
Thank you, Trustee Otto. I just wanted to thank you as staff for putting so much rigor into this. One of the things that I am particularly, I have been particularly concerned about, and I really appreciate our Superintendent President Dr. Romali being attentive and responsive to it, is the amount of contracting we do. And in my opinion, in the past, it has been a lot of excess and in some cases, fat, if I may say so. And I'm glad we're looking at that. I also appreciate the travel aspect. I mean, this is travel to boards and institutions, public institutions, is like social security to senior citizens. I think it's a very, very sensitive topic, and I would agree with the public opinion. So I would like us to look at reducing our travel as board members, not just a solidarity with the 25% cut that I'm seeing for our staff, that, you know, we be a little bit more strategic and frugal with our travel and perhaps bring instructors and professionals here in the institutions, much like we're looking at for professional development for our staff. These are some of my comments that I wanted to bring to your attention as something, as point of information and something to look at. And if it's okay with my colleagues that we assess that just so we also look at ourselves and lead by example for our institution and how to be frugal and curb our travel costs. With that, I want to recognize Trustee Entuck. I believe he wanted, he had a few questions. Trustee Entuck?
Thank you, President Zia. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I want to echo President Zia's comments on the board savings and looking at what we can do. And I guess it looks like the equivalent travel reduction is about 25%. So maybe in a future assessment or report back, we can look at what are savings that we can do that's equivalent to the other savings that we're looking at across the campus, whether it's supplies or travel or other opportunities for us to help reduce the ongoing expenses. I would like to see that as well. Couple of questions I have. One on the, I welcome, glad to see that the deficit continues to come down getting around to 8.6 million in the coming year projected. And I was looking at the increased STIRS numbers. It looks like, you know, 1920, our projected deficit is about 12% of our overall budget. And it looks like the cumulative increase is about 6 million of that is going to be retirement increase. What other projected increases are that other 60% of that piece of projected deficit in 1920? What does that, what does that represent?
So I just want to make sure, was that coherent enough? We have a little bit of an audio. At least for me, maybe it's operator on my part. Maybe I'm not hearing correct, but is, okay, it's hard.
Yeah, I think, no, I think you're correct. It was a little difficult to hear. My apologies, Trustee Entuck. If I'm understanding him correctly, he's wondering what that projected deficit of 14.9 million is made up of STIRS, PIRS, and what else?
Great. So first, let me talk about the STIRS and PIRS, that the impact to 1920 is actually not just the 1920 increase of 2.2 million, but also the increase of 2 million in 1819. That's a total of 4.2 million in 1920 over the two-year period. We also have step and column. So step and column happens year over year on the natural. And so that leads to that increase in 1920. Also, the negotiated increases are within there as well. On the non-salaries and benefits part of the budget, we do anticipate applying the CPI, the California Price Index, to most of those goods and services. So we anticipate inflation. But when we're looking at a multiple-year increase, I like to put it in a positive spin, that if we save $1 today, three years from now, that's $3 we've saved for an ongoing expense. The opposite is true. Spending $1 today to increase an ongoing expense means you're spending $3 from today. And so that's why we see the progressive increase in the deficit, that the revenue has changed only by the COLA, but the expenses have increased at a faster pace. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that does. What other question is on the deficit reduction plan? Can you share what input was given from the students and public and how we looked at what other districts are doing to address their deficits?
Thank you. We have not, and first, let me restate the question. I want to make sure they heard it clearly, that you were asking whether we received input from students or other agencies on their approach to reducing the deficit, since many of us are in the same position. I regularly meet.
Yes, that's correct.
Fantastic. I regularly meet with other CBOs of community colleges in this area. And we've had a lot of conversations about what they individually at their districts are doing to manage their budgets. We are all unique, however. We serve different populations of students while we perform the same jobs. And some things are universally applicable. Certainly, the increase in retirement costs that we're all suffering through. But how we can adjust within each agency varies. It varies on our past actions and what's led up to this point. And for our agency, we do have a higher-than-normal percentage of salaries and benefits. And it was important for us to focus on managing that cost center first. That is not true for other agencies in our area. And I am certainly envious of those community college districts that are basic aid and are not facing the same problems we are, or those districts that are not in a hold harmless and have had other increases in their enrollment that have put them at a much higher funding level under the new funding formula than we are. In some cases, the variance on a per-student basis is triple. So the impact of the funding formula and the conditions that each district faces themselves in are very unique.
Yes, I'll add to that as well. Just one item of note of interest, Trustee Entuck. Ceritos next door did do a SIRP, and they had 70 employees retire. As we looked at these, one thing that I noticed was that there needs to be some sort of coalition to look at the PIRS and STIRS statewide. So I talked to, I still need to call Chancellor Oakley, but I've talked to other community college presidents, and they are in, on board with the coalition. I've talked to cities and their men and their city councils, and they are on board with the coalition. I talked yesterday with Superintendent Steinhauser. He believes the K-12s and the CSUs would be on board with the coalition to talk to the legislator about legislative relief for this PIRS and STIRS increase, whether it is all or a percentage of. Of course, any relief would have to come with other cuts associated that. So it's a matter of what you would get and then what you wouldn't get. Everything, as you know, is a trade-off. But there is increasing interest statewide to talk about legislative solutions to this. Whether that will, you know, happen or not, of course, remains to be seen. But I wanted to let you know that. In terms of what Marlene was saying about the inequities in this proposed funding formula, I'll give you an example. Santa Clarita, College of the Canyons, minority-serving institution, 6195 per student. Palo Verde, 18,786 per student, triple. What you will find in the proposed funding formula is that 50% of my Latino students and 20% of my Black students are left out. Districts with the high cost of living, housing affordability problems, and more older students are concentrated at the bottom of the funding scale. So when we look at our projections for the future, we are at a strong disadvantage in this funding formula. And we have been working fast and furiously behind the scenes to figure out a variety of what-if scenarios. How can we work this, if this is the formula we have, how can we best work it to our advantage? If we can't grow enrollment, what else can we do? There's completions. How could we grow completions? How do we do that? What if we can't? What if, how do we get more Pell students? How can we take the formula and best position it to the advantage of Long Beach City College and its students? And you're going to see a lot of those computations that I think you'll find very exciting at the next meeting. But that's the disadvantage that we're walking into, Trustee Entuck.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all my questions.
What was that, Trustee Entuck?
I was saying, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Entuck. Trustee Malauudu, Vice President Malauudu?
I have one quick question. I don't know if it's for Superintendent Romali or for Vice President Dunn. With regard to the part-time faculty ratio, I don't remember which slide it was, but it was early in your report. Is there a magic number that we need to have X number of full-time faculty versus part-time faculty to even out? And also, in years past, have we met that magic number? And how close are we now? And the reason I'm asking is because I know institutions tend to be more part-time, certificated instructor-heavy to offset costs of the benefits and all that full-time faculty entails. But if there's a magic number that we could reach so that we are not taking advantage of part-time faculty members and at the same time honoring their experience, their expertise?
That's a great question. I'll intro it and then pass it off to Marlene. There is a faculty obligation number called a FON number that we do have to reach. In past, we have reached it. We have not reached it and paid the associated penalties. We've done a mix based on the decisions at that period in time. One thing that makes me very proud is, in fact, we have a wonderful dean sitting in the audience, Jennifer Roden. We have promoted from our faculty ranks into deanships and associate deanships. And so that provides a tremendous growth opportunity for our faculty to influence administrative decisions. At the same time, it works to the opposite for the FON. So you will see, we've, Vice President Dunn and I have already discussed that you will see a FON analysis in this what-if scenario that we're going to present on August 21st. So you can see, what if we do this? What does that mean for the FON? What if we do this? What is that? And there'll be a variety of resulting consequences, including the FON, that come out of these what-if scenarios. So I'll pass it off to you.
It's absolutely correct that the FON number is determined on our FTS. And so there is a penalty if we do not fully staff it. But it is a strategic analysis on an annual basis. That's a combination of both budgetary savings as well as the programmatic needs. And I think throughout this process, and I think Trustee Otto mentioned it, that we need to be a nimble and a flexible organization in this time of intense change. And so that is one of those areas that, as we have flexibility, we need to exercise it in a very thoughtful way, that tomorrow's going to look very different than today with the funding formula. And it's incredible dynamism that the factors involved really shift how we look at our revenue structure, that as we move forward and as that evolves at the state level, we're going to have to be reactive. And that is one of those areas of a slight. And that is one of those areas of a slight flexibility that we have to exercise.
Okay, so I just want to make sure for my edification, and someone asked me this question, so we're all clear. The reserves, as far as the dollar figures, is that codified on page three or elsewhere in this presentation? I know we have the percentage.
Forgive me while I get back to page three.
No problem.
So the reserves as presented here are simply the division of our ending fund balance by our expenditures.
Okay.
So when we say in 18, 19, that we'll have 13.5% reserves, that means that our ending fund balance is 13.5% of our total expenditures. You can see that projected for 19, 20, the deep decline, that's as a result of the deficit spending, that essentially, when you're deficit spending, you're spending your savings or your ending fund balance. 2.8% is not considered to be sufficient reserves. It's not enough to even pay one month of salaries and benefits. And it's really critical as we enter into this period of uncertainty to maintain reserves that allow us to be flexible and to respond to changes in our economy or changes internally.
Okay, Marlene, sorry, I'm just trying to understand the math. So it's the ending balance, is it the surplus and deficit divided by the expenses? Is that what you mentioned?
Correct. And forgive me, I did not reflect the ending fund balance on this slide, just so I know I can't see very well anymore and I wanted to make the font a little bit bigger that it, so that it would be easier to read. So you do not see the ending fund balance, but I can tell you that the reserve is simply ending fund balance divided by total expenditures.
Okay. All right, great. If there are no questions or comments, this was an information item, we're going to go ahead and go to class, closed session?
I have a quick comment.
Okay, let's make it quick. Trustee Otto?
Thank you. And just to be clear, and I'm not advocating anything, advocating anything one way or the other, but if we were to wind up with reserves of 2.8%, that would be not only a violation of our board policy, which of course we are in control of, but also put us on a list at the chancellor's office and separate, visit consequences on us or potentially visit consequences on us. So we're acutely aware that it's an issue and that we've got time to address it. We have three years of hold harmless, thanks to everybody's efforts up and down the state and that will give us what they used to call room to move.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Trustee Otto. Just as a reminder for colleagues and the board, if we could, courtesy to our staff to make sure they're better prepared, if we can send our questions ahead of time, that would be wonderful. That way, our staff can get back to us at the board meeting in a very effective, not that they're not, but just as a courtesy to them, I'd appreciate it. Okay, we're going to now adjourn the meeting to closed session and we'll be coming back to, the item is 2.1, Personnel Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 and Public Employee Performance Evaluation of Superintendent President. It is a discussion, there will be no action, it's information. Okay, we're going to go to closed session now.